All right, since starting, we'll bring this meeting to an end. Please rouse the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, first item on the agenda, reading and approval of the minutes for the September 24, 2024 regular council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, thank you, council, minutes are approved. Next up, reading and approval of the minutes for the October 3, 2024 special council meeting. This meeting was regarding the city manager position, which we met for about an hour or so. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved, thank you, council. Next item is anticipated executive session to discuss employment terms of city manager candidate. So again, no decisions will be made at the executive session, and no votes will be taken. Having said that, may I have a motion to enter to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to enter back into the record council meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is the hiring of city manager and approval of employment terms in employment contract. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fow, if there's any comments.
Yes, I will state, I understand that this council is prepared this evening to present an individual through a motion to be hired as the city manager. There is a contract that has been negotiated, the terms have been negotiated, and we think Mondo will be in position to have that signed. And this individual is very excited about coming to Beckley to serve the city of Beckley. And at this time, I would just ask that you request a motion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Fow. May I have a motion to hire the city manager and approve the employment terms that are in the contract?
May I make a motion to, my motion is to hire Michael Rizard as the city manager with City of Beckley. To the conditions of the county's disemployment.
I'll make the second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. You might ask, if you'd like to make any comments.
Yeah, can we make some comments about that? Yeah, Mr. Rizard, he's a... Oh, yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah, we're all real excited for Mr. Rizard to come in. He's coming from Arizona, and we're hoping he'll be here to start on December 1st is the agreed date. And he's real excited to come into Beckley. We all kind of wanted, you know, I think we're all under the understanding of wanting someone that wanted to be here. Fresh start, great guy, very, very qualified in all categories. And I'm personally very excited for him to get here. And I can't speak for all of council, but I think, I think that's kind of the moving thing here. We're all excited to make that next step and move back forward. And I think, I think he's going to do a great job and do great things for the city. And I'm honored to be a part of him being the first city manager.
Any other questions or comments?
Well qualified.
Yeah, it was all most of you. Will everybody really agree rather quickly around that? One thing I'll say is like, you know, this whole transition, obviously it's been a big news story. It's been going on for months. We kind of thought maybe we had something out by October 1st, but you know, just beginning the transition. It's been a little frustrating for me, a little frustrating for council time, just feel like you're in limbo. So I am, want to go over there and say, I am super excited. I, we talked to him just a second ago on the phone, it's the first time I've heard his voice. And you know, I'm like Cody, I'm looking forward to getting the transition period over and moving on. Great, thanks for the City of Beckley, so good job, council.
Two things if I may add to this.
Yeah.
Just on the employment agreement that he will be signing, his salary, his annual salary will be $126,200. He will start on December 1st, and his contract will run from December 1st, 2024, up until June 1st, 2028. There are opportunities certainly in the near extent, but that is the, that is the terms, the three and a half year contracts right now.
I mean, I'd like to be coming on with first and fourth that was presented to myself. It was a tough decision, it came down to two. I can say, I don't know whether if I did a right decision or wrong decision, but both of them were qualified. And I'm looking forward to working with the judge.
Anyone else? Very good, council. All right, we'll move on to, next item on the agenda is the reappointment of Leslie Baker to the Beckley Raleigh County Marketing Committee for visit southern West Virginia. Leslie, I believe, served for 10 years, almost 10 years on that committee?
Jill's on it too. The reason that we're there is because we probably have distributed the funds that are on our tax for the city.
May I have a motion to reappoint Leslie Baker to the Beckley Raleigh County Marketing Committee for visit southern West Virginia?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Leslie? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, so moved, thank you, council. Next up is the reappointment of Jill Warfield to the Beckley Raleigh County Marketing Committee for visit southern West Virginia. Jill has served... You two, you two are always... Jill, is there something you'd like to comment on? No? Okay. May I have a motion to reappoint Jill Warfield to the Beckley Raleigh County Marketing Committee for visit southern West Virginia?
Second.
Second? Any questions or comments for Jill? No? Take a vote, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, great, so moved, thank you, council. Number eight, appointment of Councilman Kim Buchanan to the Planning Commission as the council's representative. May I have a motion to appoint Councilman Buchanan to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Kim, would you like to comment?
No, looking forward to it. I'm excited for it.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, so moved, thank you, council. Next, appointment of city manager to Planning Commission as the administration's representative. May I have a motion to appoint interim city manager Anne Worley to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second? Any questions or comments?
I'm just a placeholder until Mr. Rizard gets here.
Well said.
Thank you, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay? Okay, so moved, thank you, council. Appointment of city manager to Planning Commission as administrative's representative. May I have a motion to appoint city manager Anne Worley? Sorry, appointed the city manager to Regional One Planning and Development. May I have a motion to appoint interim city manager Anne Worley to the Regional One Planning and Development Council?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments about that?
No, also just a placeholder.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? So moved, thank you, council. Next on the agenda is the award of audit request for proposal. So during the September 10 council meeting, council approved the formation of an audit procurement committee, which consists of interim city manager, interim recorder treasurer Beverly Rahabart Cook, councilwoman shoemaker Dingus, and councilman Williams. At this point, I'll refer it over to Jessica for further comments.
Okay, we met this past week and reviewed the bids. We had three bids. The winning bid is Ferrari and Associates. They will, they have bid for two years, so the 24-25, or the 23-24 year will be $23,000 for the bid. And the 24-25 year will be $24,250.
That is Ferrari?
Ferrari and Associates.
Ferrari and Associates. So may I have a motion to approve the Ferrari and Associates firm? Second? Any questions or comments, Jessica? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay? Very good, so moved, thank you, council. Next on the agenda is the discussion of action by the city council on orders authorizing City of Beckley to convey 131.47 acres of real estate more or less, located in the Pinecrest Industrial Park in Beckley Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development of this real estate. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fow, if you have anything you want to say before...
Mayor, I have a comment.
What I would like to do, if we could...
Point and quarter?
I'll read it by title, and then we'll ask for a motion, give it up, forward, and then comments, please.
No, but that's not how it goes.
Point and quarter? I object to the consideration of this question. This ordinance was disposed of in a previous meeting unless there are substantial change to the motion, which would require an entirely new ordinance. There is no reason to consider the question, an objection to the consideration of a question. Is motion in accordance with Roberts Rules 26? We are governed by Roberts Rules of Order.
Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna read this ordinance by title. It would be presented by, there was no action taken, it wasn't tabled, it wasn't voted in favor of or in opposition to at the last meeting. If anybody wants to challenge that, that's certainly fine. If we need to do it over again, we'll do it over again. But I think council at this time needs to act on this. So at this stage, I will read it by title and then leave it up to council to decide whether to make a motion. If a motion is made, then if there need to be a motion to accept this ordinance or approve the ordinance, then following that, it would be up to council to vote. And if somebody wants to challenge what's been done, that's certainly permissible.
Mr. Fow? Point and quarter objection to the consideration, this question does not require a second in accordance with Roberts Rules 26-2-4?
I'm not asking for a second, I'm just... I'm sorry, I'm gonna follow what you're saying.
Oh, you can continue.
I'm sorry, I just don't follow what you're, what you're saying.
I believe, you can continue, and then I'll...
Okay, well, I'm gonna read it by title at this stage. It's agreeing of ordinance authorizing City of Beckley to convey 131.47 acres of real estate more or less, located in the Pinecrest Industrial Park in Beckley Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development of this real estate. That is the ordinance that is being presented. The public hearing was held two weeks ago, which would have been on September 24, of 2024. There was no action taken at that time. Asking council at this stage if they desire to make a motion to approve this ordinance. It's up to council to decide whether to make a motion or not, and whether to act or not.
Mr. Fow, I'll make a... Mayor? I'll make a motion to postpone this ordinance indefinitely or until a specified time. The City of Beckley taxpayers have already paid $327,852.88 to to settle a debt for the Pinecrest property. I do believe that our council did not make a comment last time, and that is my motion to to move forward and to negate the motion.
With your motion, would have to be acted on.
I'll make a motion to postpone this ordinance indefinitely until another set time. Second?
Is there a second? Courage, courage.
No, council's no second, even though no one spoke out two weeks ago on September 24th.
I can speak up, I have no problem speaking up. I want Attorney Fow to explain about the court documents. I worked for the federal government, and it's all about court documents and what those documents state. Now, there was a deed, and then also there was a covenant done also. So if he could explain, even though you have the deed, there can also be a covenant to rectify that deed. So if he could explain that, I really would appreciate it, thank you.
Well, in the, in the deed, you're referring to, there is a provision there that does state that the property was transferred subject to certain terms and conditions. It did not have to be stated, but it stated that there was, there were terms and conditions that the property was transferred subject to. That's what occurred among those terms and conditions. It does state that basically economic development is the purpose for this property. And this deed also encompasses prior restrictions that would be on record. So there, there's more than just the restrictions between Pinecrest and the City of Beckley. There were also restrictions when this property was beaded to the Pinecrest route. But you add on to the restrictions, you don't take them away. We cannot remove the restrictions that are there. We have to abide by those. And that is what, and that is one of the purposes of transferring this property, is the county commission has indicated. They have the economic will to call to, to make it possible to prepare these lots for development. And that, that is why the city at this stage is looking to transfer this property, put some of it to the to the county commissions, to the county of Raleigh. And then they are entering into an agreement, there's an agreement being negotiated between the county and the city that will contain terms that the county must abide by.
So in other words, the agreement that you had before the county came into law, before the county came into law, that we had to sell this property to Pinecrest, or the property was already sold?
No, 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 sir, there's no requirement in a deed or in an agreement, this property be reconveyed to Pinecrest. This is what council is looking to do in order to get the economic development done. The agreement, that I'm referring to a couple of things. One would be an agreement between the City of Beckley and the county commission, that when this property, if it is transferred by council, this property will be used for economic development as was intended when this property was transferred to the City of Beckley.
If you have a will for the children, you'll find a way for the children. We had a couple of comments last night.
I understand what you're saying, but I have a problem with if the city, I mean, this should have been done a long time ago. I guess, but I'm confused that if the city had moved forth from the beginning with this, that money was transferred, or was it spent on this property? And for whatever reason, it was not spent on this property. And that's due to why the county has picked it up, am I correct?
Well, actually, it did not require any specific funds to be used. That it did not state, that I'm aware of, that harvest funds in particular had to be used. The city was agreeing that it would provide the funds to do the development for the infrastructure. That has not been done today.
So it was a fair market, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, basically, the administration was stating that it would spend the money. Well, that was the intent, certainly when the property was received by the city. That was the intention.
And we went and tried, councilman, and we didn't do it. And so that's why they came to us and said...
I would like to walk myself out of the ward, but I will say this as I go, this is why you need to have a workshop. You are being lied to, you've been manipulated, taken and manipulated. Do something about it. You are smart enough, and you can do the job.
I believe that, I believe that there are too many unanswered questions going forward. I want to be an informed, everyone knows how I feel. But for council to change their, it's been transformative, actually, in two weeks. No one said anything, and we have documents. And if we have the money to do the 480, do the, do the, do the infrastructure, that's the City of Beckley's property. I don't believe that we should transfer that to the county. We have money to do the infrastructure. But since we're in a discussion, I would like to ask my fellow councilors, what was the change in your decision from, from saying nothing to transferring it to the county, so now? There's no seconds. I'm confused.
Like I said, with Attorney Fow explaining the court documents, that is exactly where I was reading, where I didn't get a chance to read them, but with him explaining, I'm not an attorney. So that's why I asked him to explain the court documents to me or to us.
Perhaps...
And he did a great job of explaining that to us.
I'd like to make a motion...
A court document is a court document. We can't, we can't revise that. We can't revise no court document.
Can I make a motion to have a workshop so that we can clarify all of the things before we transfer this to the...
There was no second.
Any second?
So it was no second, so at this time, I'd like, may I have a motion to approve the conveyance of the Pinecrest property over to Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development?
What if we, what if we, what if we do the economic development, the City of Beckley do the 480?
What I'd like to see is, right now, she made a motion, let's take a vote on her motion. What was that motion, Jim?
My motion is to postpone the ordinance until we can clarify some of the misinformation that's out there.
Was there a second? Okay, all those, any questions or comments before we vote on that? Can you postpone? Anybody want to say anything?
I would ask that when they vote, you have those older hands up, you do...
Yeah, would you buy show hands? So at this time, I'll ask for a vote by show hands. If you want to postpone this into the next city council meeting, please take five or raise your hand.
Thank you.
All those that do not want to postpone, please raise your hands.
That's the thing, we have all the answers, we're just pushing it off and off, we have the answers. The property's been disturbed, the cross-country tract is no longer in full effect. We've done, the old council sold...
We just had a vote.
The old council sold two acres of that property, that property is disturbed.
Four to two votes.
Mr. Fow, we just had a workshop.
All right, next item on the agenda, notice of application for the Western Vin A B C A Class B license at 622 South Fayette Street. This item requires no action from council, Chief Code Enforcement Officer Morgan, would you share the application, please?
Wait, I can't, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
In the B1 neighborhood highway business district. This location is 622 South Fayette Street. The intended use, Class B carryout license establishment, is a permitted use in this B1 zone. This location is not in an area designated as a dry area by common council.
Thank you, Captain.
Wait, can I ask, Captain, what exactly is that?
Pressure at the bottom of the heap, driving in.
Valpactet.
It's not Valpactet? Okay, thank you.
All right, next item, explanation of rebidding for group number three, which is 107 Upper Lane and 104 Hunter Street for the ZWAP grant. The bids for Empire Savage Recycling and Tom's Tarener were tied at $11,000. So during the last regular council meeting, we did not realize that two companies previously mentioned both submitted the same dollar amount for the demolition of these two structures. At this point, I'll ask Jessica, she has any comments about it?
No, we would contacted the state and asked them for the rebidding procedures. So they had both of the bidders rebid that one job, and so we had the two bids come back in. Empire Savage came in at $8,000, and Tom's Takeaway came down, came to, came in at $9,999. So then we will award Empire Savage the bid.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. All right, next is old business. I want to say congratulations to the city, to Jill Warfield, for putting on another super successful... I know so many of you all were out there, I saw a lot of you all out there. I didn't really get a chance to see much of it, come up, I care, slams little pips, but just the enthusiasm, I mean, I, I think it's one of the best things that we do. I mean, everybody comes together, you can tell, families, kids, everybody had a great time, so, so you know, I really appreciate you doing that, putting that on.
We've got a great team, everybody here, all these, all these departments chip in, and create a good committee, and just all the different groups that make chili and get other things.
And all the employees and volunteers that helped out. Yeah, so thank you. Anything else for old business?
Yes, I want to thank, I'm sorry, thank you, mayor. I would like to thank Jill Warfield, she doesn't like for me to keep thanking her. But she has done an outstanding job with bidding Bishop Hightower to complete the statue for Bill Withers. And I just want to thank you for bringing that committee back together, and how you just raised so much money to make that happen. Thank you so much.
I think, I do want to report that during the household hazardous waste collection that the city helped Beckley Area Foundation with, and Pine, Pine Creek Water Shed, or the Clark Family Foundation, there are a lot of people that helped. 466 individuals brought material to the old paint, saw and strippers, paint stuff, hazardous waste. 466 people from 8:30 until 2:30, we'll do that again in four years, it's very, very costly. So thank you to everybody that came out and helped and did that.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Oh, I do. Uptown Dish, I know everybody's gonna be there at 8:30 tomorrow morning. Michelle Rodeney has their new place opening up on Main Street. I know a friend out in the audience is going to be there at 8:30, eating breakfast. So Michelle Rodeney has... Y'all might not want to see me there with all of this going on. But thank you all for showing up, appreciate you so much, you have no idea.
Any other? Well, we do have one more arguments for Halloween. I'm excited about this, and just kind of, students will laugh about this, but this is kind of the first kind of thing I have to do for the city event. And I know it's very modern, but I, I'm still excited about it. So I got with the county, and we changed the trick-or-treat hours from five to seven, which I heard from so many people, is dangerous because everybody's flying home from work, and they're trying to get the kids, try to get the kids dressed up and out the door. So we just thought it was a safer idea to move it to six to eight, just in the sense of safety. So I'm over. All right, next, we'll move on to public comments.
Mayor? Mayor, I have one thing.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
My bad.
I am super excited for the city manager to come. Michael Rizard is his name. And any of the media, we will be doing a press release tomorrow. So Keith, if you want to see me afterwards, I've got a number. He said he'd welcome a call from the media. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Like I said, public comments is up. Just remember, when you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address. Please keep your comments less than three minutes. And, you know, just make sure we don't use vulgar discriminatory language, language, that's all I ask. So first up, no shock here, Mary West.
Exactly. Okay, everybody, I'm back again, and you guys keep showing up for that piece of land. From the trees to the street on the rural avenue. And I had a sign down there for, what, two weeks? Now it's gone. Idiots are still coming through there. Now I'm like the sun up there. I was raised in the east, and now I sit in the west. And clouds come all open, so let me storm on nobody. Something needs to be done. You want to make this a one-way alley, make the rural one-way. Everybody that's coming off of sixty-four, come on up to the light and turn onto Johnstown and come into town. Because this is beginning to be ridiculous. Somebody's gonna get killed on that street, kids walking off the buses, trying to walk home, and people coming through there like they're on racetrack. And another thing, city manager, what in the world does that you all go way out the Earl's Own? Make me look like you all, uh, tons of bums and hillbillys like that. Nobody here out there do nothing? Please, people, wake up, you smell the coffee, the doors don't smell the same. You didn't have to go that far to get nobody, but go somewhere and get somebody there, put something down on the rural desk, and I thank you all. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening once again. Sure happy to see me. I'm happy that you voted the right way this time. The last time I was here, I spoke about three Cs. Some of you may remember what they are. Tonight, I'm going to give you the fourth C, choice. You can choose our children over chums. You can choose civics over cynicism. They're here, you see them? This is our future.
That's right.
Raise your hands, there you go. You can choose courage over fear. Remember, courage comes from your heart. But you must, in the end, choose what's best for our children. And you must choose what's best for our children over what's best for your pals. You, as a council, said you were changing. Let's see that change. This is your opportunity to change. You said you want to be a strong council, be a strong council. Being a strong council is about having courage. It's not enough to know better, but in order to do better, to be better, you have to do better. Okay? I don't mean to be preachy at you, but somebody's got to speak it.
Amen.
Part of knowing better, so you can do better and so you can be better, is getting a second unbiased legal opinion. Because, because we all know, where there is a will, you will find the legal way. Our kids are worth it, they're watching. Thank you, council.
Often I grew up, my mother used to tell me, if I have to ask you one, once, that was once too many. And I learned that lesson quite often. I have came up here since August and have asked Scott Worley and Greg Stovall to be honored posthumously for their work in the city. It's not their fault. I've also asked over and over to look into the safety commission. It is a legitimate position, it's on the books, same as Pope works. And as my mother would say, please don't make me ask you again. You know, it's simple, I'm asking results, let's move forward. We all want to move forward, that's what this whole thing is about, let's continue to do it. And I think the honoring of two citizens is not done enough. It's strange we have to do it after they're passing, but let's please get it done. Thank you.
Christina Beasted. So I'm going to ask this council if they've received all of the documentation for this Pinecrest development. The Register Herald published forty different pages of the transfer agreement. Did each of you read it? There was also a sixteen-page covenants that was also printed with the Register Herald, which I also read. Did you know that we were paying the NRG RDA eighteen thousand dollars a month for, I mean, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand a year to pay for their rent? That's in that transfer agreement? We've provided you with the deeds, we've provided you with all of the covenants. You should be provided every single piece of every document that I'm talking about right now in that workshop, so you can make an informed decision. And the fact that our city attorney has not supplied you with those documentations is a failure of local government. We have repeatedly showed that he is biased and that he lies and gives half-truths to this council. So why is he still employed? He is at your will and your pleasure. Give him some.
All right, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?